Listening to your goals and dreams is our top priority at West Tennessee Bank. Benefit from our more than 100 years of experience and visit our Henderson branch today. West Tennessee Bank, focused on you. West Tennessee Bank is a division of Decatur County Bank, equal housing lender, member FDIC.
Next on the agenda, we'd like to approve the minutes for a special problem meeting on June 21st, 2021.
I approve, Commissioner.
We have a motion to double due.
Sorry.
Is it the same as Commissioner Larry Blackstock?
I have Allen McKinnon, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we'll have the quarterly reports and the amendments, starting with the school system, superintendent.
Good evening. You've noticed from our quarterly report or final quarterly report, we're close out of the year at will. Where we have our expenditure, we're a little bit less than budgeted in most of the odd areas. And then, on the revenue side, of course, we're above budget in some areas.
I make the motion to approve the outstanding.
We have a motion to approve this quarterly report of the school by Commissioner. Russell Clayton, second by Commissioner.
Blackstock.
Blackstock, Larry Blackstock. Any discussion about the school budget before the quarterly report? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I have two budget amendments.
One budget amendment, I just want to speak very quickly about, we applied for a grant for the school district called the Heavenly Economic Product Capacity Grant. It's a partnership that will be occurring with the school district and the local medical provider where we will be able to provide staff and students at the need or the discretion to do COVID testing during the school days. So we don't have to partner with some clinic immediately or send our staff to do these treatments, they can do it anyhow.
No, no further. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garner.
The second by Commissioner.
Second by Commissioner Emerson. Any more discussion of the budget amendments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have the highway department. The highway department was closed today at 11 o'clock. They have three cases of the new Delta virus and the health department referred us to close them this week. And they have a person home call, but they are quarantined this week at home. We'd like to ask for prayer for the highway department. But everyone, I'm willing to receive their quarterly report.
How long have you approved their quarterly report?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Blackstock, making the motion, second by Commissioner Allen McKinnon. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on to their budget amendments, the highway department has no budget amendments. So, next on the agenda, we have the trustee report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let everybody down and focus out. Really what we're going to pull out here this time is the, well, page five, very tough. $40,000 in uncharted taxes, that's taxes already paid going forward for 2021. We will love those taxes and we're just going to until September, October. That's, and thanks to that, a pretty much we call approved for several years ago, we'll look back on here again. Thank you for that, Mr. President.
I make the motion to approve the quarterly report.
We have a motion to approve the quarterly report for Commissioner Tannenferro and second by Commissioner Miss Hiddings. Any discussion? All in favor?
No, you can rest your act on, if you were receiving any of that.
These, this quarterly report ends as June 30th, and those ones will not proceed until July. But then we have, could have happened in our position as.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the county general, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did everyone hear the copy of our report? We finished the year ahead, underestimated revenues, underestimated expenditures, that's how we maintain our balance. We think that really well on that. Any questions, they'll be allowed to answer.
I make the motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve the county general by Commissioner Clayton and second by Commissioner Higgins. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then on to the solid question report also by Mr. Higgins.
Uh, sadly, on the solid question report, uh, overestimating and underestimating, uh, is the way we can hold our balance. Uh, we are hoping to make it to September, uh, October without having actually official funding like we talked about last year. Not real sure about that, just to get over the, if there's any questions, talk about the answer.
I move to approve.
I'd like, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Clayton and second by Commissioner Emerson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have the library.
Yes, now for the library plan. I'll say, Mr. Higgins.
Any questions about the library?
I move to approve.
I second, thank you, Mr. Higgins.
We have a motion to approve Commissioner Blackstock and second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion of the library report? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What did I say?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tannenferro. Any discussion of the drug plan? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think it's the funeral service.
Funeral debt service.
Those are all these, that's our ruling, I don't know, that's service for our, to our parents.
I make the motion to approve this service.
We have a motion, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tannenferro, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have four budget amendments, uh, two solid, uh, actually, I have one on the general ones, but I'll save about that. Uh, I know Mr. Brett Long you can pay, we now, uh, steps for the long term, a history of fifty, seventy-nine, eight hundred dollars a year. Uh, and they can increase register twenty-five year period, and we missed paying our last year for the long term, so we need to amend that. And also, I'll, uh, have to guess, there was a discrepancy in last year's, uh, figure of from state pass to this year of seventy-three dollars. That cost us, uh, we were short in budget seventy-three dollars, so I would ask for them to include that seventy-three dollars in the line.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Blackstock and second by Commissioner Garner. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye to the budget amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In solid ways, we, uh, I budgeted thanks to the wrong line item, you should, you mentioned, and I'm asking you to correct that here as initially.
I make the motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Clayton, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the planning.
Planning commission has no financial report, however, uh, we now have a, our maintenance code enforcement officer, Deion Davis, is now at work. Uh, we have gotten all the subdivision regulations and planning done, uh, that people hopefully won't hitch out of the county. So that's underway right now, and so, let's, and we will be tomorrow night at six o'clock in this room for a training session.
All right, thank you. Next on the business, I want to change the agenda, because I know most people is here, um, for the, about the Regent's building. I want to first go over our perimeters and stipulations of the American Rescue Act Plan. Guidance concerning for allowable expenses for funds under the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local physical recovery fund is being modified every day. After discussion, the CTS and the Treasury and the comptroller, uh, the comptroller of the treasury, I'm sorry. They have, they recommended that all local government wait on finalizing plans to use these funds. The vacated Regent's building is only going to be purchased with these funds. Because in our last commission meeting, it was passed that we consider the purchase only if the American Rescue Fund therefore could be used. Therefore, being unclear of the guidance of these funds, I'm asking the commissioners, if you tabled this issue. The US Treasury is expected to issue the final guidance for this act in September. But they are urging us not to use these funds for final guidance about. So, I would like to ask if the Commissioner would make a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman, I would, we tabled this, we'll keep the discussion ongoing.
I got you, Mr. Higgins.
We have a motion to table, by Commissioner Barry King and second by Commissioner Anderson. If there being any discussion, uh, I know that most people here is for, here for the reason possibly for a bank. But I've been on the phone most of the day in the CTS and the comptroller just to see, because I knew there possibly might be a vote on it today. But they, their advice was to take it. So, uh, that is the reason that I brought this to the commission. So we have a motion and a second, and we need roll call or just?
How about by whatever?
Yes, a tag. Yeah, it's a tag, just, just roll call.
Johnny Garner.
Yeah.
Can we still discuss the motion as a whole? Can we still discuss this, if the motion has a whole commission, after you had the first and the second?
Yes. Yes, we can discuss it, we have a, we have a motion and a second for the table.
Yes, we do. But besides the information you shared there, you've shared some inaccurate information as well. This is the second manual you came from your office that states that unused portions will go to other counties. That's what it says on your information back to who sent on there. It was stated several times by folks in here, it is patent fault, it is misinformation. It clearly says on the guidance, and I verified that today, the comptroller's office as well. Unused portions go back to the federal government, they don't go to state, they do not go to other counties.
It goes back to state.
But it's written here, that goes to other counties. Okay, it's inaccurate information, you tried to point that out, I asked me. But my fear is that there's a lot of misinformation that's being shared with very different people. We have a long range planning committee meeting two weeks ago. Chair and Lewis scheduled the long range planning committee, we had a meeting. There's nothing on here that says we're getting an update from that meeting. When the committee meets, we share an update from the full group when we have a meeting. One of the motions that was voted in members, we found in that meeting was to do just this, slow down. Forgive discussions applying new buildings until such time we're able to have better insight and information from the guidance. Also, another motion that passed members in that meeting was that we share with the commission our recommendation to provide the public forum for the citizens to give us the input. Another very specific guideline provided by the comptroller's office by CTS. And we haven't had to do that, that's what we've been asking for, put the brakes on, slow down.
I have to slow down about this, sorry, this is all game with the schedule.
Get from table, yes. But also, I understand you also had a budget committee meeting after our long range planning committee.
Me, we had a budget.
Did you have a budget committee?
Yes.
What was discussed with the budget planning committee, we don't see the minutes, we're being referred to here.
The budget committee meeting was on some other subjects. The chairman, Mr. Chairman, would you want to, uh, interject? Even though that doesn't, that doesn't really do the.
But there's nothing on here to address. Was there anything regarding the Regent Bank discussing the budget? Was there any discussion about the Regent Bank possible purchase in the budget committee?
Was there discussion?
It was not officially, it was on the agenda for the night, yes, there was discussion about the Regent Building, yes.
Talking about transparency for the citizens.
Man, I'm trying to make a subtle point here with my fellow commissioners. There was no vote or action taken, and there was discussion. And I have had multiple discussions of this.
Well, the budget committee had the first discussion, but we didn't bring the recommendation to the commission, commission at that time. But their, their discussion at the budget meeting, uh, the first time, uh, in June, I can't remember exactly what, uh, to consider the purchase of, which was exactly what was in the commission meeting. And was well known, and he passed out one vote. And to get the minutes to see Chris, but at the moment, we have a motion to table and a second. Any more discussion? If not, I'd like to have a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this roll call vote concerning putting this off until the first of September?
Yes, sir.
And if we was to use this money between now and the first of September, and it don't go through, will we be liable for the money to play back?
That's, that is correct, that's the reason we're wanting to wait until the guidance is clear that, uh, the money will be covered for the purchase through the relief fund. And they supposed to have the clear guidance out in September, the US Treasury.
And the US vote will be postponed.
Sir?
The US vote will be postponed.
Yes, to table it and postpone it until the guidance is clear that the money can be used for purchase before we ever vote on it. Case it passed, I don't, I had, we asked specifically that it would not be voted on unless the money was sure to come from the COVID relief funds and not from the taxpayers account. That is the reason I'm at, wanting to table until we get clarification that it will be covered. Whether it passed or not, I'm going to be known.
I'd be as hard to table for that if we include the provision that other guidelines are also met. Which is providing a public forum to get feedback from citizens to the taxpayers on our best spending money. We have until 2024 to allocate money and 2026 to spend money. Let's use that time, and let's make sure we keep the interest of all of our county at the forefront.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Quiet, calm.
Johnny Garner.
Voting up a question, yes.
Hold on. Johnny Garner.
Voting up a question, yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstock.
Yes.
Allen McKinnon.
Yes.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Clayton.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Joseph Malero.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander. John Rhodes, Todd Lewis. All right, fourteen forward question.
Our question, now we'll vote on it in a second.
Russell to table rate the divine purchase. Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstock.
Yes.
Allen McKinnon.
Yes.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Jackie Butler. No. Ann Moore.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Clayton again.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander, Todd Lewis, fourteen. Oh, sorry, thirteen one, thirteen one.
So this was, we tabled until the final guidance is clear, and we know exactly that it can be covered. Next on to the agenda, uh, discuss, consider, appoint any interested district citizen to finish a recent vacated commissionership from District Six. Okay, in, in appointing the commissioner there to finish the vacated seat, we have three interested citizens. All three citizens do live in the District Six. They are Terry Bell, Ronald Boden, and Renee Phelps. The way we're going to do is, we're going to roll call, and each commissioner is to give the name of the interested citizen for the seat. If any one citizen has the majority of votes, the selection is over. If not, the lowest vote getter will drop off, and then we'll roll call again for the majority vote. The selected citizen will assume the commissioner's term after being sworn in for the September 2021. So, the three citizens to be considered for the commissioners are Terry Bell, Ronald Boden, and Renee Phelps. Does everyone understand that we're doing?
Do they need to leave for the run while we're voting?
Well, if these. Who, who's leaving, I don't know, so I mean. Yes, now this commission's thing is only filling out the rest of this term, which this, the, the one chosen will have to run again, or if they elect to, to run again, this coming next August for a commissionership. And the majority being, they, anyone, okay? If anyone gets nine, the selection is over, so we'll have a roll call.
I need to know who you vote for. Johnny Garner.
Terry Bell.
Jerry Love.
Bill.
Larry Blackstock.
Bill.
Allen McKinnon.
Bill.
Andrea Hollis.
Terry Bell.
Jackie Butler.
Ronnie Boden.
Ann Moore. I'm sorry, Carolyn Higgins.
Mail.
Russell Clayton.
Mail.
Jerry Emerson.
Terry Bell.
Sandra Hyers.
Well, one of these I don't know, so, I wish that we could have each one speak to us, so, at least not if I don't want. Terry Bell.
That's it, question number.
Okay, Terry Bell filled the term of the vacated commissionership until the next election. On to the agenda. We have the consideration of the resolution of the litter grant, Ms. Amber.
Good evening, good evening. Every year, the complete Department of Transportation provides Chester County with a litter grant, it's forty-four thousand two hundred dollars. This money provides a jailer to clean our roadways, inmates, and education and outreach for accounting. And then we also hold cleanups at our offices that provides money for that. Um, so we, every year, we go through this resolution because Kedon asks for it. Um, so we will need a motion and a second to approve the litter grant resolution.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve the litter.
We have a motion to approve the litter grant by Commissioner Tim Crowe and the Secretary of Commissioner Gordon. Any more discussion about the litter grant?
Yes.
Is it just county roadways or state roadways?
It's just county roadways. They actually have somebody come in from the state every year that TDOT contracts out the county roadways.
They started on October month of two weeks.
On our website, we have a spot where you report litters. You click and send an email straight to me, and if the Jager don't play it up with inmates, thousands, probably out of town. We've actually found a couple of late donations past six months here that we've signed up and done.
Thank you all. Thank you all. I haven't really been able to speak without without cars in front, behind, and in the lane on State Avenue.
Any more questions?
Any more discussion? If not, I'll let Congress say aye. All right, any opposed? Next on the agenda, we are considering options about the timber on the 185 acres owned by the city and the county also.
This is a day, the Solid Waste Department, along with the Solid Waste Committee, has recently had two meetings on the option to cut the timber by the bidding cap. The Solid Waste Department had taken quotes to see the timber was worth cutting at this time. The Solid Waste Committee made the recommendation for the Solid Waste Department to look at hiring a company that was recommended by the Tennessee Department of Agriculture Division of Forestry to look at the timber on the property. Tennessee Timber Consultants will come and do a walkthrough in the next two weeks and give us an idea of what trees are on the property and the estimate for free. Once the company looks at the timber and the estimate comes back, the Solid Waste Committee will meet again to discuss the estimate and auction of timber. Tennessee Timber Consultants will help the county with the bidding process, oversee the job site, and be environmentally responsible and make sure the area is cleaned after walking is done. If the Solid Waste Committee makes a recommendation to cut timber and hire consulting companies, it will be presented at the next county commission meeting and will need to be voted on by the whole county commission at that time. The Solid Waste Department currently has a small hard area for residential lease and brush at its maximum capacity right now. The city is bringing in 35 tons of brush and we're getting anywhere from 80 to 110 tons of brush now. So that area that we've added on, because we've moved our hard haul, and that area that we've added on to down there is a little expensive. It burns efficient, but it doesn't burn enough brush as much as we're getting in. So we were looking at going before the city alderman, depending on county commission's approval, if we could take the money that we get to decide to cut the timber and try to use it on our, and this would help keep our brush haul caught up, and that would also maybe go before the city alderman. And that was a day. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Next, we are to consider the importance of the redistricting committee. Every ten years, the county, the state, everyone goes to a redistricting and we face this off the census. And as of now, the census hasn't come back to us to look at, but I still would like to appoint this redistricting committee, which would consist of Jerry Love, Al McKinnon, Ann Moore, Jerry Emerson, Diane Jordan, Todd Lewis, Stephen Morris, and Troy Kilsert Jr. I would like to give this approval. Probably won't meet until the Census Bureau gives us some information, which they was told, they sent an email to me telling me would probably be in September. Ms. Kathy Best might know more about the dates on it, but
We shouldn't have typically have that information by September, and then we have to have it completed by December third in person once we did this thing.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just recommend that you add Kathy to your committee.
Okay, what? Yes, sir. I was thinking she would automatically be there, but yes, we need to
I need to have her on.
Because we'd be getting our information from her. Yes, and Kathy Best on that committee as well.
I'm literally broken.
Say, we have a motion to approve the meeting by Commissioner Larry Blackstock and the Secretary of Commissioner Tim Crowe. Is there any more discussion about the redistricting committee?
So that does include one current commissioner from each current district?
Yes. Yes, and then now the election commission, I had two individuals that would be two to election commission. We have a motion and a second. All in Congress say aye. Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have other business, and in this other business, I'd like to read a letter from the Carl Perkins Center. It is to the county, the county commissioners, and the community leaders. Thank you for receiving and taking time during this meeting to share our information, this being Carl Perkins Center. We appreciate your leadership and and are incredibly grateful for the continued support you have shown in our center for many years. The Chester County Carl Perkins Center recently submitted a letter for the long-range planning commission, commissioner, and county mayor. This letter provided information about the mission of the center, center services, the impact that COVID-19 has on our ability to provide services, as well as the concerns and obstacles we face within our current location. It has come to our attention that there is a need for clarification within our community regarding the intentions of the center and what we're coming before the community commissioners and the county mayor to consider. The center did trudge the Regent's Bank building in March. We provided information on how the building could be utilized by the center with minimal renovations. When compared to other buildings we have trudged. While we did provide information on how the building could be utilized, we also could enclose in paragraph that we do not want to interfere or create additional burdens or discord around the decisions of the Regent's Bank building. We graciously come to you asking the commissioners and the county mayor to review and consider earmarking American Rescue Plan funds, which could allow us the ability to secure a building for the Chester County Child Advocacy Center. The Regent's Bank building serves as a template of what the center needs in order to provide all services simultaneously in a manner that follows CDC COVID-19 safety recommendations. But the center is not seeking the Regent's Bank building. Our center cannot do what we do without the love and support of our community. Our intentions and request for consideration of funds are not in call, or consideration of funds are not to cause friction, but to advocate the meaning, the needs of those in our community who are vulnerable and hurting. Chester County children and families need us more now, more than ever before. Our ability to provide needed services is impacted by our current location, and COVID-19 has exacerbated these issues. We are grateful for your time and thought consideration of our request, as together we can offer our children and families of Chester County the most valuable gift of all, hope. On behalf of the Carl Perkins Center, board members, staff, and children of the families we serve now and years to come, thank you. Colonel Curry-Porth, county director of the Chester County Carl Perkins Center is here tonight and available to speak after the meeting, to speak with anyone or to schedule a visit to the center. The county director, Curry-Porth. I thank you for this this letter, and that will be in consideration when we get our guidelines.
I just want to say, they live in a basic job. We work with them very closely, and they provide a very strong accent to this community and this county. A lot of people don't really realize just what they do, and that may impact you personally, but I'm going to be encouraged in the entire board of what they do. I personally appreciate you, because I've seen firsthand, and I'm not going to speak and share it. People can speak for themselves, and I'm sure they agree with what I'm saying.
I agree. I understand. They do a whole lot of this county that people don't see, and a lot of it is impactful, if they work with the family vehicle.
Yes, thank you. Also, in other business, we do not have a representative here, but our Dixie Youth has three teams going to the World Series, and each one of them is in a general state. I know all before in the past, we have donated a donation to the Dixie Youth to help the teams go to the World Series. I would like to ask if the commission would entertain an amount to give us a donation to be divided three ways for each team. And I'm not sure if one is left yet, but I know they'll be leaving real soon, and I think one leaves this weekend, and I think it would be good if we, as a county, could deal to the Dixie Youth, which would be divided now three ways. I would like to entertain an amount from someone I know in the past. I can't remember.
Do you want to give them in the past? You remember 510? I'll make a motion. I said the motion would give 510.
We have a motion to entertain three times 500 for each team. Any more discussion about this? If not, we're going to take a roll call.
Hey, that was Tim in there. It's me and I'm going to watch. My roll call.
Roll call, yes, sir.
Johnny Gardner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yes.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Ann Moore. Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Flay.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crowe.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander. Todd Lewis. Fourteen four.
Thank you, and I'm sure Dixie Youth will really appreciate it. Next on with their big, any other business?
Yes, sir.
Can you report on the ongoing challenges?
Yes, we have the, we had it looked at by an investment company. They gave us a report, and it does show asbestos in it in three different areas. They have referred or gave a name of a company that could come in and take out or dispose of the asbestos, and then we could get a better, I guess you'd say, decide whether if we want to fix it up or bury it down, but the asbestos has pretty gone out regardless. I've contacted one local company, but they say they don't do it, that they suck it out. So I'm going to call later this week the company to see if they will give us an estimate for the removal of the asbestos. And it is found in three different places, in the windows, the doors, and in the glue that sticks on the tile, the seams. And it ain't, it's not in the floors, so the cost might not be that much, but at that time, we have a better view to know what to do with the building.
Is the foundation and everything still okay?
The company, they come in and looked at it, said the building was found, but there possibly is a roof leak that would have to be fixed. And parts of the inside would have to be removed, but that would all come after we get the asbestos out, we could give what's bad or see, give us options of what to do and do.
Right. Oh, Dan, do you know where the asbestos has been, any of you?
Everybody deserves a call leader. There's a place in Arkansas that did that. I think it was Clean Harbor or somebody's. Some of the landfills waste industry, they container, you should take it in a special place.
Any any more other business?
May I also to request clarification to setting up public forums for discussing expenditure with the COVID relief, which committee will make it?
Now, you were asking to have a forum in different parts of the county in each district?
Well, which possibly, I'm not specifying anything now, which committee will be responsible for?
Well, I would think that each commissioner in the district that goes there should attend the meeting in that area. So
I'm just going to know which which committee, which one of the committees will be responsible for setting up? How we're going to approach it.
They'll have to do a change later, because this week, under the guidelines, I was wanting instead of have a certain committee to go over these COVID fronts and uses of it, I was wanting to have the whole commission be used for the decision of the money, not just one committee, and we would schedule a work session, and the whole commission could make the decision with everyone who know, and it would have to be a recommendation. It would be done in version with each commission taking part.
So you're lying to each commissioner to solicit the input?
Yes, we're trying to get plenty of input for from the control of the city council, what is available at the time. Any other business? If not, was next on the agenda is the notaries.
Turn around.
My second.
You got a question in a second. I got it.
Crystal Gail Holder. Penny R. Hinsley. Joseph D. Blakely, Blakely, excuse me. Susan Ross. Anne Landvichy, Amy Landvichy. Samantha Campbell. Michelle Toward. Aunt Janelle Rochelle Touson. Erica. Erica Big Young. That's your answer. I still don't know.
We have most of the notaries, we have the state county chairman. All? All in favor of the notaries say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I'd like to add for motion to return.
Go, go, go.